Senator, and we are going to call our meeting to order and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, take roll call. Christensen is not here, Nesma is not here, Porter.
Here.
Zabala?
Here.
Sandstad?
Here.
Strunk is not here and Alruff is here. Looking at the agenda, I'm actually just quickly, anybody have any comments for the board? No, Jake, Ellis? Okay, thank you. We'll look at our agenda here, we've got a couple of modifications, you'll see the 3.1 is just informational. Also on the back page, we have added, I got the low discount budget here, so the 5.4 and 5.5 will be added as well as 6.3 as a discussion item. Other than that, are there any modifications to the agenda?
And we're gonna remove the...
Oh, I'm sorry, and we're gonna remove 5.6.
And seven, the closed session.
And seven. We do not have a closed session tonight. Any other additions or modifications to the agenda?
I'll move closer.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, the agenda is adopted. We'll look at that. One committee report, Mr. Brownlow, would you like to give that information?
Sure, so we went into closed session after our last meeting to discuss negotiations, realized that in the resolution reducing and discontinuing educational programs and positions, that inadvertently left off the .21 FTE of medical careers, so when the meeting reopened, last meeting, the board did reopen and then did take action to amend that resolution to include that .21 FTE for medical careers, so it's one and a half class periods for next school year to include, be included in that list of that resolution that's reducing and discontinuing educational programs and positions. So just got recommendation that we should bring it to the board's attention and to the public's attention, and it was taken care of and so it'll be reflected in our minutes that you'll approve at the next meeting, but it does include that .21 FTE of medical careers and people have been informed that includes their position.
Sure. Any questions or discussion on that? Pretty straightforward. Then we'll move into our administrative reports, and that brings us to Ms. Prash.
Well, we thought we escaped winter, but we didn't last week. We had two e-learning days, which the staff and the students did a fantastic job with, so I was very, very impressed with that. We had really hardly any glitches at all and the kids did great, the teachers did great, so that worked out well. Hopefully we don't have anymore. Staff development last Thursday, our K-6 staff was here in the media center, we had presentations by wonders, which is a McGraw-Hill product, at Benchmark Education, because of course we were going to adopt a new language arts curriculum, but because of the REACT we waited, and so we had presentations by those two programs. We're hoping to hear shortly in May now with the appeal process that they both made it through and then, again, we have to wait for the state of Minnesota on that piece. And so we're gonna wait for that, and then our next staff development early out, which comes in May, we are going to have a rubric that we're going to follow and each grade level's going to go through and score that, so that we have a decision for the board when that time comes around. And it all, they're all evidence-based, research-based, scientifically based on the letters piece, so all of that has been proven for both sets of the curricular choices.
Natalie, can you just quickly clarify? We have the right to choose one that's not an approved curriculum, but the state does not give me...
Yes, we do, but then we don't get any funding from the state to help pay for that curricular purchase.
Thank you.
So that would be the only reason, because the teachers asked, actually today in our staff meeting, can we pick one that's not approved? And I said absolutely, if we feel that's in the best interest of our students and that's the ones we will go with, then there just would not be any reimbursement from the state for that curricular choice. And there was only one that was approved the first round, so they're thinking that there's gonna be quite a few more that will make it through the appeal process now. It was interesting because one of the presenters told us, one of the things that they couldn't find in the benchmark was the OE vowel combination, and like the benchmark people said it's on page whatever, I mean they knew exactly where it was and they're like, oh, I mean, you know, so some of that review process seems a little iffy, but who knows? I don't work for the state's department, so there we go. Also, the letters training has been set up through the co-op, and the Jody Monro's done a great job with that. We have two choices for two days that the teachers in K-6 and our special, or K-4, excuse me, and our special ed teachers will attend. And then we have, of course, our early out time will be used, and then of course we have 16 hours that the teachers have to do on their own. It is required for early childhood, however, that will not start at the same time because there's actually less hours and the curriculum is different, so we can't do it all together. So that will probably start in November or January, but Jody will get back to us on dates for that training. And then last but not least, we hope to send report cards home on Friday with our families. We had a little internet glitch today, so we're still waiting on a few more report cards, but we hope to get those printed and then sent home with our kids on Friday. Any questions?
No questions. Thank you, Ms. Prash. Mr. Wood?
Alrighty, so lots going on in this secondary. Ms. Rollhouse here headed an ACT prep session at the beginning of this month, and she set up different prep sessions with several teachers. Ms. Summers, Mr. Byers, Ms. Bergman all helped out in providing some prep for the ACT tests, and we had a really good turnout there at seven in the morning, and we had most of the junior class here, most of the days. And so a big thank you to all of the teachers and Ms. Rollhouse organizing that. Our junior students are gearing up to take the ACT next week on April 9th, so we'll take the ACT at the Hoffman Community Center, and that is free of charge to all students. Other things going on, we had March Madness that was led by Senora and the National Honor Society, a variety of activities throughout the week, and then Friday's lineup, which was Ironman Dodgeball, which is always a favorite, staff basketball games, Friday show and dodgeball. The National Honor Society also conducted a blood drive, March 12th, and so another big thank you to Senora and the NHS students, they contribute a lot to our school and our community. Other things I wanted to highlight, really just the overall success of our student body, we have some really, really amazing students at WCA that are doing awesome things in a huge array of events, including we have quite a bit of community outreach happening as far as students helping around in the community, we have some educational field trips coming up, obviously had athletic success in both wrestling and basketball this winter, artistic endeavors, honor choir, pep band performances, speech, our ag accomplishments, which could probably have their own board report, but we had the PBS TV special that aired earlier this month, and Jamie Johnson is also a state finalist in two proficiency awards, we're launching our meat processing trailer, and I'm sure there's other things that I've forgotten to include here, but just overall our students are very active and involved in a wide array of activities. And are, you know, they're, they hold themselves to a very good standard when you see our students around, you know, the state basketball is a good example, which is how our students conduct themselves, I'm very proud of them. Looking ahead to April, several events lined up, we are screening Angst, which is a documentary about anxiety in young people, and really anyone, very, very interesting documentary. Our staff, high school staff viewed it here last week, we, elementary staff viewed it today. The documentary deals with recognizing, helping and coping with anxiety, but we'll also have a community showing, students will view it on Monday, next Monday, and then there will be community viewing on Wednesday. Hoffman, or, excuse me, Herman will be coming here to show their students, and Ashby will also be hosting a screening and a community screening as well. And other events are, include the ACT as I mentioned, MCA testing is coming up, and we will get to scheduling for the next academic year this month as well. Any questions?
I don't. Thank you, Mr. Wood. Mr. Foslien, anything going on in the activities world?
No, it's been, been pretty quiet. Been, I've been a study at the building for the last couple of weeks. I mean, we somewhat joke, but you know, it was, it was a busy state tournament, we had, and then last week we had the State AD conference, I started this week with a couple of meetings, but I will be in the office for a full day tomorrow.
Nice. Wow. That's gonna add your name to that list.
Yeah, it's gonna be a big day tomorrow. I already joked with Nate, I don't know what he's gonna do with me here.
We don't either.
Anyways, moving forward to my report, we mentioned boys' basketball, congratulations to them on their fourth place appearance this year in the state tournament. What some of you may not know is Coach Hunter was selected the Section 6 Coach of the Year, as well as the Class 8 Coach of the Year, so congratulations to Coach Hunter on those accomplishments, and as well to his team, I mean, the first time WC has been there in forever, so, so quite a fun winter. Couple of facilities and usage updates, our spring season started so promising, but with the return of winter, I know Maya knows, we use about every space we can use, Hoffman, Elbow, Hallway, just recently we got lined up with the Hoffman simulator for golf, we use a simulator in Ashby, and every, Chad knows, every piece that we can use. Hopefully, looks like things should be rolling next week, weather looks good, so hopefully we can finally get outside. We all know the spring season is busy, everything's outside, so just remember to be flexible, things are ever-changing, so even though the schedule says one thing, it's probably gonna change, just give it $24, so. Besides activities or athletics going on in the spring, we have robotics coming up here on Thursday and Friday, that's at St. Cloud, we have subsection speech Friday at Browerville, we have small group choir at Unowaska coming up Wednesday next week, I do have a meeting Wednesday next week, so I will be out of the office that day. We have Jazz Festival for Band Morris next Friday, as well as visual arts, I know I mentioned that before, but we do have that date now correct, it is Friday the 12th. The section speech meet is in Minaga on the 13th, we have small group band at Morris on the 17th, the state FFA convention's on the 21st, and prom is on the 27th. So once we do get rolling in April, there's lots of things.
Awesome.
That's my report, any questions?
No questions, thank you.
Ms. Doss did give a written report here, so just some, kinda asked her to lay that out, because there's some key pieces here as we look at our, some of our summer programming, which she's already looking to start planning for summer ball, for both adults and teenagers, she's looking forward to hire there to take care of those programs. The big one that we want folks to be aware of is the YMCA in Fergus Falls is changing how they do swimming lessons. My understanding is they did them at the lakes, was it Pond Butair and Elk Lake, I think. They're no longer having their folks travel because they don't have enough people, so now you have to travel to Glendalo State Park. And so we talked about that a little bit, see what options would be available, not conducive for families, so that's why we want to let them know as soon as possible. There's not really an opportunity for transportation because kids have to stay there for about four hours, I guess, if they're, to stay through all the sessions, so we're looking at other options, we may not have another option this year, but that's kind of how they've got that set up and things like that. I know Chicaio has a pool and things there, but it still doesn't necessarily mean that it'll work any better, but we just wanted parents to be able to plan ahead because we realize that that's, Glendalo is just north of Battle Lake, so it's gonna be 35 to 40 minutes there. My understanding and talking to Megan Alexandria YMCA swimming lessons fill up within 10 minutes of being posted, I think, so it's not an easy piece to, to find, but unfortunately that's kind of the cards we're being dealt with right now with our swimming lessons. All the other programs will be going out, flyers for that will be going out in early May. Daycare information at North has gone out to our families, registration for summer care opens April 12th, and I know that's also a quick fill, I think, there as well, when Megan did it last year, and I think watching one of your board meetings when Naomi was here, it sounds like that fills rather quickly, and so we'll be getting information out on that as well, as well as preschool registration.
I mean, on that, she did communicate with me today to look at some gym stuff and facility things for summer, so her and I will help coordinate those things as well.
Okay, sounds good. And some smaller basketball, she said that was the other need as well, I think, right? To take care of some...
Basketball.
Small basketball, so she said that was the one piece she was gonna work on there as well.
Alright, thank you. Mr. McAmara?
I'll be short and quick tonight.
Heard that before.
As far as technology goes, as Mr. Wood said, we have the ACT coming up on Tuesday next week. We have done the ACT paper pencil the traditional way, the past few years, we're going to do that again this year, we're gonna reevaluate for next year, just because doing it online gives us a little bit more flexibility than we do it on paper pencil. We have one specific national testing day that we have to do it on, so there's no flexibility around that. Then the week of the 15th of this month, we are going to be starting our MCA testing, which will last through, through the remainder of April, and then today we had a nice little snafu for our internet, took us a little while to get it fixed, however, we do have it fixed and corrected, so we'll be ready to go tomorrow. Huge thank you to Stacy for all of her efforts and the things she did to make us, one, keep me sane, but two, get us back up and running. The other piece I was gonna mention is huge kudos to the teachers for a, from my standpoint, an excellent e-learning two days in a row last week, so not easy for the teachers to do, especially a second day in a row for the elementary teachers, however, they did a fantastic job.
Great. Any questions for Kevin? Thank you. Bring this to Mr. Norberg.
Hey. Mr. Brownlow and I have been working hard, I think you got that report or we got that report out to you on what was on there, if you had any questions on that. Just a little update, I have somebody coming to do a walkthrough with the roofs and stuff, that was lined up, and then Mother Nature put something on top of our roofs, so hopefully the end of next week he'll be able to come down. Those numbers that are in the report, we're hoping maybe will go down, but that was just kind of an estimation that we threw out there. There are a few other things that we've laid out before that are bigger projects, but I think that's something that we'll have to talk about in the future, as far as probably a bonding issue or something like that to go through. The big one that comes in is the fire marshal did show up, he was here, I did throw some things out at all three buildings that he would catch, so we didn't look perfect. No, I didn't do that.
Nice work.
So he wouldn't find the other stuff, no. No, it actually, it actually went really well, he was a new guy, he came from the private sector, he'd been doing hotels and nursing homes in the private sector. Yeah, he was just, every door he checked to make sure that they worked, and he looked outside, he just goes, oh, it's so nice to see fields and trees. We had minor stuff, the biggest thing is, is the curtains, again, we've talked about this for a couple of years, I do not have the report back on that, I do have the report back on the other stuff, there's just some few minor things that I've gotta take care of, a piece of sheet rock and a lock and a door and things like that that are very minor to take care of. I did have to take pictures of the curtain manufacturer tags and stuff in all three buildings, and I did forward those off to him. The only thing he said is 20 years is what they are for, so up until we hear back from him, I don't know what, what he's gonna cite or what he's gonna suggest, I guess, is what it comes down to, not cite, they suggest and give us recommendations. The two elementaries were 98, which surprised me, I thought they were gonna be older than that, but they were 98 and the one here is 99. So, that's where we're at. As far as everything else, we're just plugging along, we had a little health issue with one of my employees that's out for a couple of weeks, so we're scrambling and moving people around again, but my, my people are being very helpful with that, and I'm very appreciative, and they're doing a good job of, of moving from buildings to buildings to, to get stuff done, I know it's not always liked, but they're, they're pitching in and we're doing what we can, so.
Alright, you gonna be okay? Health issue?
Yeah, I will be. Yeah, the health issue, the health issue got, got corrected and we'll be okay, just need some recovery time, so.
Okay. Great, any questions for Chad? That brings us to our business manager report. Welcome.
Thank you. Be a little on the spot, I do not have anything for you right now.
They have, they have your sample in front of you, so...
Oh, okay. I was just gonna say, I...
These, these aren't our financials.
Yeah. They look very balanced.
I saw you looking at like, oh, Gary's, he's gonna say, okay, this is looking really good, but yeah. So Erin Nasca joins us from School Management Systems, this is her second day being here, she was not here last week, but comes about one day per week to start, and then we'll be doing more work remotely, digging into things, getting things figured out, and just wanted to give you a sample, I'm gonna let her explain it, but seeing if this is something that she would like as a board report on a monthly basis to see where the district's trending, to give you some high-level information that way, so if there's some tweaks that you would like to see, I did show her one other report that I've seen another district use, to kind of show where that fund balance policy is and stuff there, to see those trend data lines, to see if that's something as well. So I'm gonna let her walk you through it, and, and then you can offer any suggestions either this evening, or else if you see something that you'd like, she could take that and bring that back to the next meeting.
So basically, in these first few columns, the first, obviously it says revenues, expenditures, and then the next three columns is just for fiscal year '24, would be the current year, and it shows the adopted budget, the revised budget, and the year-to-date actuals. If you look closely, you can see that it's got the adopted budget and the revised budget, they're the same, it's because we don't have a revised budget done yet in our, in this other district. But if you look at that, you'll be able to see the year-to-date as of eight, would have been March 30th, March 31st, that's what we, those are the revenues that we had received by the end of March. And then the next column over is what they've received the prior fiscal year at this time, which I'm still working on this, this is the brand-new report for them as well, it's pulling in their total for the whole year, so you'll see where that comes into play. When you go back, go down to the next column, that's two years prior, and then in this column under the SMS logo, you'll see 2024, 2023, and 2022, and in 2024 it's showing us, okay, we've spent 58 point, or we've received 58.33% of our general, local revenues in the general fund. So overall, we received 65, roughly 66% of the revenues. And this is what I still have to fix, that's why I don't have one ready for you either. It's got 23 and 22 at 100%, because it's pulling the data from the whole year, it's not looking at that this specific month, so that'll hopefully get cleaned up soon, and then if you just go down the list, it's the expenditures, and they are broken out by program code, so admin, district support, elementary, secondary instruction, you can see there what that is, and then if you go down even further, it's broken out by object code, which would be, can see this, so it'll be, you know, the salaries and wages for all of our employees, the employee benefits, and then that's the amount there, can see the change in fund balances based on the expenditures are actually $20,630 over the revenues, so that, that's what that number would represent. And then on the next page, it's the revenues and expenditures for our other funds that we have, our food service, community service fund, our community education fund, student activities, things like that. So I can recreate this for our district, or if you want me to get, if you don't want to see it by program and by object code, however you guys want me to work with this, I will gladly make it work.
Is this the actual district you're working with, or you, have you worked with them the three years?
No.
Oh, those aren't your numbers, are they actual numbers?
They are.
Okay, so you probably don't have a lot of history, I just found it interesting their salaries are up less than a half a percent a year.
It's because they haven't, they haven't, they just got their contracts approved, most of them, so right now there's no retro or anything in there.
And built back into it.
Correct.
Yeah.
That's why there was no revised budget done either, because everybody, nobody had settled until just this last month, like, it just got approved, so.
Okay. And there may be seeing the rotate of older teachers, younger, I mean, there's so many dynamics that can go into all of that, programming and everything like that. I was just curious, if you'd worked with them for three years?
No, not for three years, no.
So then what you're saying is essentially, once this form works correctly, we would see, so we're in April, we would see April numbers for '24, '23, '22, kind of seeing a trend of where we were at.
Yes.
That's how it's supposed to work.
I was trying to work on that today.
Yeah, no, it's okay, I just, I just wanna make sure it's clear in my head, so...
But yes, that's exactly what it's supposed to do, is show you at this snapshot.
At this point in the year, this is what we were last year, the year before, like that.
Yep.
I think that's what we want, is to avoid any pitfalls, of course, you know, Paul, more importantly, probably even than us, but we all need to be part of it, so then we can zig and zag a little bit, so we don't roll into June upside down.
Correct, yes.
Yeah.
Well, it looks good.
Any other questions or comments? Easy, well, again, welcome.
Yeah.
And thank you, and we'll keep working, right?
That's exactly right.
Paul, we'll keep working, right?
That's all we can do, that's all we can do, so yeah, we'll get that, I think that trend line data's pretty important, because sometimes certain months you're gonna see where it goes down, or you want, wow, we spent a lot of money there, but if you see for the last two years, at the same time, all that money goes, there's a lot of spending there because of expenses or timing, and all of a sudden you go, but then we should trend back up, I think that's helpful for the board, just to take a quick look to say, hey, we can continue to go, or boy, we need to maybe look at some changes here before even the end of the year, so I think if we get that to you, that would be helpful for you to, to be able to have that high-level look there.
Absolutely. Brings us to you, Mr. Brownlow.
Well, I apologize for having to step out, there's nothing more frantic than when you look at your report and it says February 7th. I have a lot more to say than what I had to say on February 7th, so stay tuned, hold on, here we go. So negotiations, as you're gonna see, we have a contract tonight for approval, just took a couple of meetings, I really think through the financials to get that done, and so we believe come up with a fair and equitable settlement there with some different pieces that, we'll move into that, and I'll clarify that when we get to that point to vote. Health insurance, we have a meeting tomorrow after school with one of the teachers, myself and the representatives from NIS, and so what they'll do is they'll go through the last two years of claims that we've had, not any personal or personally identifiable information will be shared, but just to see where we're at, so we can start getting ready for that renewal in July, and of course our cap is at 14.5%, so it can't exceed that, hopefully ideally it would be 2% or 3%, but that doesn't seem to be the trend where insurance is, is rolling. Property insurance renewal, Joe was actually working on this and, and then in the interim, missed the meeting, and so they've reached out to me, so on Friday at 9:30 in the morning, I'll be reaching virtually with a representative from EMC, and this meeting's a little more important than I thought it was gonna be, because they actually called me up, and Larry called me up today from Ellis Insurance Agency, what they're looking at really is our two elementary buildings, they want me to take pictures of the roofs, the boilers, the electrical systems, the sprinkler systems, and so...
The sprinkler system should be pretty easy, should be an easy one, yeah.
It's just outside on the garden.
That's right, exactly, so...
Well, yeah, it'll make it more effective, we can put colored water in real quick too, if you want.
Good, yeah, that'll help, well, I was just gonna tell, it's a dry system, you don't have to worry about it, but what, the importance of that is, is I'm sure you're hearing that some insurance companies are pulling out at certain locations, maybe in other parts of the country, they're also pulling out from some schools, we have a neighboring school that is, they have pulled out of their school district, so they need to make sure that they're able to cover their expenses, and so I think they have some concerns about our facilities, because they didn't identify this building, it's just those two buildings that I've gotta send pictures to show them. Hopefully we can go through everything and don't have to worry about loss of coverage, but that really is what it's coming down to, is to check that out, now Larry said, said it doesn't mean that we won't continue to look to find you another carrier, but he said, you know, at that point the cost could be a little bit more expensive if you need to go, and remember our insurance last year went from roughly $85,000 to $104,000, so it was a huge increase already. Larry did also tell me, because I said, well, I'm hearing that this is going on like in California and things like that, well, his understanding is that the Midwest oftentimes subsidizes the insurance claims on the coast, because they're naturally gonna see stronger storms and things like that, I think with hurricanes and other things, allow the Midwest to starting to see a lot of those storms roll through as well, and so that's why they're kind of reevaluating, but it is really due to the, the, our facilities at the both elementaries, which I think you're gonna see later on your agenda, we're gonna talk about our facility evaluations, so it's probably timely, and those didn't be, weren't done at the same time, it just, they happened to fall at the same time, just so we can get ready for our property insurance renewal. Fiscal '25 budget, as Erin's been digging in, and she's got piles all over... But it is really due to the, the, our facilities at the both elementaries, which I think you're gonna see later on your agenda. We're gonna talk about our facility evaluations, so it's probably timely. And those didn't be, weren't done at the same time. It just, they happened to fall at the same time, just so we can get ready for our property insurance renewal. Fiscal 25 budget, as Erin's been digging in, and she's got piles all over her floor now. So now I don't feel so bad because my desk used to look like that. But I think they might be the piles that I put back on her desk. So going through those pieces there. But we did some preliminary work to determine what our reductions needed to be at last month's meeting. Now it'll be a matter of tweaking some of those pieces to make sure that we've got everything reviewed with a fine-tooth comb. So we'll do those to see department budgets, purchase services, and, and things like that. Instructional coach, so at last month's meeting in that reduction plan, I did include the instructional coach as well as the community engagement piece. And I do believe there's still a need for an instructional coach, especially as we look at the REDACT. That's gonna be a substantial piece to implement, I think more than what our principals can, can successfully do. And as we also talk about trying to ensure integrity amongst all of our buildings. When it, our fidelity, I should say, amongst our buildings with implementation. That's been the biggest piece that I have heard through the REDACT. I believe we need to look at offering some type of an instructional coach piece. And so I have reached out again to our former instructional coach just to see if there's some opportunity there for us to work through something like that, to take care of that. Of course, budget's still a critical piece there, but also making sure that we're doing what's right for kids and kind of moving forward there. Which then leads me to my next piece, the purchase services. That's gonna be something, too, that Erin and I are going to be turning over and looking through everything from transportation to legal services. You know, we still have some very significant public data requests that are coming in that have a significant expense to the district. So trying to see if there's different ways that we can handle those as we pull that data and put that together. And so we need to find some ways to take care of that. Looking at our, you know, lawn care, snow removal, trash. I talked to Chad about that. I said, I think we need to look at anything and everything. And I know some people chuckle and laugh when I do this, but I know at certain points, you can turn off your dumpsters during the summertime if they're not being, you know, used and hopefully save money there. So I think just to reassure folks, our taxpayers, as well as staff, as we're looking at anything and everything that we can to make sure that we're using our dollars in the best way possible. Auditing would be the other thing that we'll go out and get an RFP for, just to make sure. Because the audit this last time, I think it was because of some of the novelty to the people who were in our current office, working on that. And so that cost us a lot more money than what we were expecting. And so getting some of those things taken care of there. Again, twisting and turning everything on the budget. I think when we looked at the part-time teaching program, never thought about the early retirement incentive. I did have somebody reach out and just said, you know, is there any potential ability or availability of a buyout, you know, program there? And I said, well, I guess I didn't think about that, but sure, I've seen that in the past. And my understanding back in 2013, I did talk to John Crafty, said that, I think, happened maybe for about three years. So where there's some type of an incentive, maybe it's paying for health insurance for three years. Maybe it's health insurance, and it looked like TRA, the district side, was maybe offered here. So I think we might look at that as well, just to, to make sure that we've evaluated everything that we can to maintain our budget and things like that. So it's not that I'm alarmed about that, but we will see our budget continue to dwindle just a little bit with our enrollment and just expenses and things like that. So I want to make sure we evaluate all those pieces there. And so I think we'll all propose, put something together. And probably at our next regular board meeting, have some type of a preliminary MOU that you could look at to see. I guess the biggest piece, it's gotta be mutually beneficial to the staff member, but also the district. Because I think once in a while, maybe some of our administrators get a little nervous that, well, if that person leaves, what's the likelihood of getting somebody back into that role? And so it's a tough piece there, but something that we want to look at. However, I will say, many districts, I know our district last month looked at reductions. We're not the only one across the state. There's a majority of districts that are having to look at reductions. So that might open up some opportunity for us to, to find some folks there as well. So just want to let you know that running our due diligence to make sure that we've looked into all those pieces. As was mentioned already, we did have two snow days. Well, Friday, we used our tops day. So remember, our staff come in prior to school to get their classrooms organized. They get that tops day, so we don't make up the first snow day. We use that for the state basketball tournament. There was some concern from folks that what if we don't use that day, what's gonna happen? They're the ones I'm gonna put fault on. They jinxed this whole deal moving forward. So we use that on Friday, then Monday, Tuesday, we had the snow days, which we turned into e-learning days. I still think there needs to be, I agree, our staff and students do a great job. I still think there maybe needs to be some evaluation as we look at our primary grades. And here's where it gets difficult, right, of what's equal for me as the, I'll use myself as the high school band teacher compared to what's fair for the kindergarten teacher. It may look different because I think trying to get, you know, 18 little kindergartners around the screen, that's a burden on daycare, on parents. Maybe we need to look at some of those pieces, recognizing that fair is not always going to be equal. But what's in the best interest of our students, our families, and our staff as well. So I'm a continuous improvement guy. I always want to look at those things. And sometimes that's why things don't always get done on time because we're always looking to improve. But I think that's one of the pieces there that I wanted to kind of check and see. And then I thought there was one other thing on my notes, was the snow days. And probably wasn't that important after I find it, but summer school. Summer school, kind of talking a little bit, not necessarily as much about summer school. But I think there's still opportunity to do some work. We can do after-school programming for that summer learning loss. We still have dollars available. And so we would have time yet until the summer starts. However, there could still be some summer programming that we could look at. Then we'd have time into September to use still some of those remaining ESAR Finance 161 learning loss, out-of-school learning loss time that we could do. Still ideas that are percolating in my mind would be, do we look at some technology pieces there as well? We've got money for equipment, so can we look at some of those Spiro balls? Can we look at some of the robotic Legos and maybe have some teachers get some training on that this summer? That we could cover with those funds and then continue, you know, to use that for that summer learning loss? And then continue to use those to have an impact for kids as we move forward to, to do that. But then also looking at our reading and math to see what we need to do there. So I wasn't gonna interrupt you, Natalie, at that point to bring that up. But is there anything that I missed out on that? I think there was just some clarity, excuse me, some clarity that needed to be offered, right, on, that we're still very much interested in.
When are those ESAR dollars up?
September 30th. They all need to be expended by.
Okay.
And so we, we have a little bit of time to do that. But I think there was maybe some, some clarity that needed to be offered that we weren't saying we couldn't do after-school. It was just, we would like to look at summer school pieces, too, if possible. But we've struggled getting kids here and things like that. But maybe we look at those after-school times. I do know that we did that with the ACT prep and stuff there, I think, which was helpful for those students. And so trying to find ideas that we can have impact for student achievement.
Yeah, we have teachers interested in the after-school piece very much so.
Sure.
And there's a couple of dates on the back, but there's more than that coming up. But we'll just leave it to those two dates.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Romo? And that'll bring us into our new business then, and we'll have the first reading of the following policies. We've got Policy 206, public participation in school board meetings, complaints about persons at school board meetings, and data privacy considerations. Policy 207, public hearings. Policy 208, development, adoption, and implementation of policies. And Policy 209, code of ethics. You should have the current copies in your report there with the changes, correct, Mr. Romo?
Very minor. Again, remember, I told you that Terry likes to spell out Minnesota and statute. So it's just those updates. There are some grammatical changes on placement of words. The biggest change is gonna be in Policy 208, the development, adoption, and implementation of policies. Several policies were listed there as annual review. Now it's the only ones left for annual review, our Policy 506, student discipline. Policy 806, crisis management. And then Policy 722, public data request was added to that policy as an annual review. And we do have that in our rotation as we go through those policies.
Okay. Any questions or comments on those policies? All right, then we'll move on to 5.2. Approve the 23 to 25 master agreement between the Independent School District 2342 and the West Central Area Education Association. Did you have some comments?
Did you? I'll, I'll let you. Do you want to, all right, doesn't matter, right?
No, if you, I thought you said you had something you wanted to talk about there first.
The amendment would be the one piece, but if you want to start, then I can kind of go through those pieces there.
You know, we, I, I thought negotiations went really well. There was a little bit of turmoil in the air, it felt like, but I don't, I think it was brought on to us, not in our district. Does that make, is that reasonable for everybody? I thought our, I mean, I didn't think we had any issues at all. We had pretty straightforward meetings. There wasn't really a lot of, I guess, issue with it outside of the delayed start of everything. So that made it look much worse than it, than it really was. But once we got going, it really went fairly quickly. And, and here we are, already approve it. They've already approved their end of it. So our approval will, will put that in place for the next two, well, for the remainder of this year and next year, right?
Yep, absolutely.
So.
And so, yeah, so it was a three and six on the salary schedule. When you add steps and lanes, it moves it to a five and eight percent. So remember, our salary schedule, there's steps embedded in that. So if somebody is here, year one goes to year two. There's a step which has an increase. Plus, we, what we did is, or what the district did, is added 3% to the current year, 6% to those steps and lanes to the second year, to remain competitive with the neighbors that we are competing against, to, to retain and attract talent here to work with students. And so you're gonna see that, that teacher salaries total increase over the two years was $646,000. $628 extracurricular was $26,442. There's a few pieces that will take effect July 1, moving forward, so the second year of the contract. Just to make that retro check a little bit easier, it's the teachers when they sub in lieu of their preparation period. It used to be $28. Now that's $30 per full preparation period. It'll be $15 for a half a preparation period. And so we'll make sure that that's very clear in the, in the language in the contract. And then our professional development, which oftentimes happens during the summer, was $22.50 per hour, until it's been increased up to $30 per hour. So our REDACT piece would be that, if they do some other professional development during the summertime, which has to be approved by the administration, they would receive that $30 per hour. And then the health insurance increased by $80 per month, taking effect into next year. So that doesn't take shape until September because that contract really goes, even though it's a July through June fiscal year, our teachers get paid September through August. So that'll take shape then in August. However, rate increases do take shape in, in July. So the payroll department gets really excited about all those different changes and things like that. And then there's just one amendment. So total package is roughly about 14.88% over the two years is where that number, including all those different changes there. The monthly health insurance contribution, as I was going through the contract to get everything cleaned up, looked at the, it says that it's on a prorated basis, so the 403B contribution is prorated. So whatever their FTE status is, you know, if they get a $2,300 contribution because they've been here for 20-plus years and they're .78 FTE, we give them .78 of that $2,300. Health insurance, that's what it says in the descriptive paragraph. But then you go down to the chart below, and it actually breaks it out from .5 to .6, .6 to .7, .7 to .8, and then .8 to full-time. And those numbers didn't really seem fair and equitable. So I did talk to the, this was today that I talked to them. I said, to me, the fairest part is if you're at .87, you should, because otherwise, on that chart, it was at .815. And so there was a little bit of loss in money, but same point, could be more money than should be available there. So to me, if that's how we do the 403B, that's how it is in the paragraph on a prorated basis. But then we have a chart below that kind of shows. And so my suggestion for the amendment is to remove that chart to say, if you're at .82, you're gonna get .82 of the health insurance contribution, wherever it is. So they're not getting anything extra, anything less. It's truly there. And so that was just one piece. Unfortunately, I didn't notice until I started calculating things out. I'm like, well, how does this all work out? And, and I think this is just the fairest way, cleanest, to say, here's how your contract will match up. Your salary's at .78, your health insurance is at .78, your 403B is .78. It all matches up.
Perfect. I would just, I'd make one comment, too. I don't know if we've publicly addressed, you know, some of the concern in the community, maybe, around the delay in the negotiation. It was very specific and methodical from the teacher's perspective and what was going on with the state to wait, rather than, I think, some people thought, well, nobody's doing anything on either side. But we were hopeful as a congruent group of individuals that the state would probably have some additional funding with the surpluses that they saw. And so we waited till, I want to say that we were being advised. There are the teachers that talked to us about waiting till late November, early December at the earliest. And so that's when we did start our first discussions. And then, of course, earned safe second time. I mean, there's a lot of legislative changes that were very important to integrate back in. So I thought it went very smoothly, too, from my perspective. And I think the teachers representing the teachers would agree. So just to clear that, so the public, it's a clear perspective rather than maybe some of the noise that gets shared nowadays on how it really did go down in a couple of months, like you had indicated mine. And I think it was fair on both sides. Just a comment, so. I would move to approve if there's no other comments.
I agree with you, Eric.
Yeah.
Is there a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We'll move on to review preliminary summer 2024 project plan.
That is correct. So this has been reviewed by buildings and grounds probably a couple of months ago when we looked at these pieces, just taking care of some of these needs within our buildings. And so our summer plan moving forward, you're gonna see there's a lot of electrical work that'll take place at all three buildings. The biggest one is going to be North Elementary. We've got the courtyard lights. So when it's dark in the evening, families are walking up to the office area. Right now, there's not much for any lighting, so it's very dark, except for the window lights. Yeah, when the window lights shine out, that's about all you have are your cell phones. So we'll take care of that. Roof repair, we've just kind of got that on a continuous cycle. But not really making any large headway on that at $10,000. We, we realize that we've got some bigger pieces to take care of there. Security system, I know when Nathan, Terry, and Maya, I think, reached out to our staff, the biggest concern that our elementary staff had was building security. So it's really the doors. We found out that staff, they were using house keys sometimes to get into our elementary buildings. And so getting that to be more secure. And so we'll go to a, an electronic key fob system. And so you'll see the cost for both buildings there, $16,500. And I should have said right from the very beginning, you're gonna notice I put up the funding source off to the right there. So we do have a plan for those dollars moving forward. So at North Elementary, roughly $37,500 would be our cost there. Broke out between operating capital, law and rage, capital improvements, safe schools, and again, operating capital. South Elementary, roof repair, again, $10,000 there, just to make sure we've got things taken care of. But again, more substantial need, so this isn't, we're not at a point where we're just doing $10,000 to keep us on top of what we need to do. We, we have more substantial work, but that's something that our budget right now can't with, can't sustain that way. We've already had to do that using our LTFM funds to take care of some of the pieces here at this building. Dishwasher motor, that would come out of fund, too. And that fund right now is doing fine because of the free lunch program, free breakfast program, security system for the doors, again, at South. And then the windows, taking care of some caulking there, just to make sure that those windows are in a little better shape than we have at North. And so we just want to make sure that we're taking care of those pieces on that. So a total expense at South of $32,125. Now there's additional pieces, but again, that's gonna be on a grander scale. I think of whatever the board determines on how we want to move forward. Of course, we know that the gym has been mentioned a little bit, I think, with some pieces there that we need to take care of. But again, not something that we can fit into our summer, summer budget expense. Secondary school, roof repair, much smaller there, which it should be because they were redone here probably for the 2017, right? Was that first bond, I think, the LTFM bond? We've got a lot of work for plumbing here, the locker room showers, taking care of those. The commons, middle school, and high school bathrooms, sinks in the science classroom. So we want to make sure that everything is functional there for our students and the instructors. And then windows here, $15,900. And there's replacing some seals, screens, outside caulking, replacing four windows in the courtyard. And then that north door, remember, I think it was brought up that we had snowbanks coming in. So we got the doors fixed. It's now just taking care of that piece of glass on top of that there. Parking lot, excuse me, courtyard lights by the flag. I think the other thing that was mentioned by a few of the board members was our presentation when folks come to our buildings, making sure that we've got that taken care of. And so all of our lights don't work in that courtyard area, so getting those taken care of. So getting those taken care of. Parking lot ceiling and striping, just at the secondary school building, we believe that our parking lots, that there may not be much value in sealing those, seal coating those. But here, you paid a lot of money to get that done back in two thousand seventeen as well with the roof. And so we just want to take care of that. So right now that's an estimate as we get a few quotes to see, but that's going to be a pretty strong ballpark number there to take care of those pieces. And then bleacher repair, that's taking care of those wheels on the bleacher and a few other minor tweaks to our gym bleachers here, getting those fixed. And then that maintenance contract, remember that was mentioned too, in all three buildings. When the gentleman, I still didn't get his name, or the name of the company, I can't remember that name, but he had came in and just said, hey, you really need to have your bleachers inspected every five years. And I said, well, that was my concern. But I said, what do they do? Who actually inspects them? He said, nobody does, right? I think, didn't he say, nobody inspects them until somebody gets hurt? And then they want to see where your placard is that they've been inspected. And then he also will check all the tethers on the, on the backboards that like looks like those seatbelt pieces there, the wrestling mat lift or the batting cages, just to make sure that those are all in good decent condition. There could be additional costs. He did mention, he goes, this is just the maintenance contract that we look at. But he said, if there needs to be some pieces replaced, there could be additional expense there. So then that expense is eighty-three thousand, eighty-eighty-six for a total expense of a hundred and fifty-three thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars. Probably ask, well, how are we going to cover that? That's covered on that right side of the paper. Operating capital will take care of roughly fifty-eight thousand, six hundred dollars. Safe schools, we already have a reserve of funds there, so it's not taking anything out of there. That was at the end of fiscal twenty-three. We'll be able to use that thirty-three thousand dollars that we have there. I think we have a reserve of about thirty-nine thousand. Long range capital improvements, your account balance right now there is about five hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So that would still keep that north of a half a million dollars there. And then maintenance budget would cover our maintenance of the, that contract for the gyms. And then fund two would take care of the dishwasher motor at South Elementary. So we've got it spread out there. It would be able to be handled by the budget. And all those are expenses that can be directed that way.
All right. Any questions, comments on that plan?
And that's just to review. I figured we'd take action in case you needed more time to look over that or had any questions there. Chad's already been reaching out, so I think we're okay to get things lined up if they know that at the April seventeenth meeting it would be approved. But most of those vendors, oftentimes we're looking at Vinco, Mission Mechanical. We have reached out to others as well. Mission Mechanical, Vinco, Alex Glass and Glazing would probably be the ones to take care of our doors and things like that, as well as then the other vendors that we've kind of reached out to about that.
All right. So then we'd look for a motion to approve that.
We just, we just reviewed it. I don't have it to take action. So yeah, we'll do that. I'll put that on the April seventeenth meeting.
No action then. All right. That moves us to five point four. Review and approve Witseth School Facility Proposal. You guys got that? Did you get that? You got the email with that proposal? As we have had a couple of, you know, Witseth did a walk through with us, what, a month or so ago?
Yeah.
Something like that.
A little over a month maybe.
And so they looked at all of our building plans. They actually digitized all of our building plans for us, which I think we looked at that a few years ago, it was a significant cost. But then we asked for a proposal for facilities assessments. And so as we start this process of what is our buildings, what are we going to look like, you know, long term? We're, we're kind of, we're kind of at that point where everything we have now is seven to eight years old. All of our assessments are that old. Everything's, you know, prices have gone ridiculously up and probably are on the way back down again. Who knows? That's all up in the air. And so we reached out to Witseth. This is one of the companies that we had in. We interviewed at one point when we chose Zerberg and Gertz Construction for the last projects. They're out of Alexandria and Brainerd. They came over, they said majority of their work that they do is school assessments. That's what they, they do. And so their proposals come in and give us assessments of both of our elementary buildings, where they're at physically, envelope wise, as well as you'll see on the board packet, the education adequacy of those sites and where those things are at. And obviously, as we just talked about, we've got a lot of pieces in those buildings that are going to get assessed by our insurance policy. So we, we want to make sure we know what's going on with those and what our best step going forward is. And so they gave us this proposal for the facility assessment, the educational adequacy. They also have on there if we need to do community engagement for any sort of bonding type issues. There's, there's other fees as well for those things. But we'd kind of be looking at, I guess, initially, the plan would be is if, if we were going to do something, say roofing projects or electrical work, some sort of a heating option, you know, ideally, we would like to get that figured out so we could get going on that. We've kind of, I don't know, in my opinion, we're, we've been on borrowed time with our boilers for a long time and we've, I think, done a good job of maintaining them so that we have heat in the winter time. But at some point, they're just going to say, we're done, you know, or walk, they're walking out on us pretty, probably sooner than later. So anyway, I, I guess, again, personally, in my opinion is that we need to start somewhere and, and start at square one where we can say they've given us a clean view of what our facilities are and what our options are. You know, our enrollment has kind of taken a little bit of a decline. So, you know, do we need to be exactly what we are, you know, what we thought we needed, you know, on our last three options that we put on for a bond? I don't know what that looks like yet, but this would kind of be a first step to get us going back down that road as far as, you know, what, or what are we going to do? What are we going to look like in the next ten years? But some of the things I think we're going to have to address is going to have to be a short term. You know, we're going to have to fix what we have now because regardless of what we decide long term, we're probably going to be in the buildings we're in right now for probably another three to five years before we would get anything built or changed or, you know, whatever, remodeled. So we're going to have to be able to operate for a while yet too. So I guess that's my two cents on that process and that, that's kind of what this assessment would start us down that road of, you know. Nathan, any other?
Well, I think it's, yeah, I agree with you. We need to make some steps to evaluate the building and find out whatever. Maybe there's something we're not seeing right now that's going on too. But where do we come up with the money, the thirty-eight thousand, five hundred for this?
We have money. Right. So we have money in reserves. Of course, that's a reserve that continues to get a little bit smaller and smaller. We'd also have our long range capital improvement dollars if we felt that that would be useful. You know, that's a roughly right now, five hundred and eighty. We've got that sixty thousand, so we could use that and it would drop us a little bit less than, than the five hundred thousand. But I think that would be a spot too where we could use those dollars if we wanted to there.
So you're comfortable with that?
Well, it's always a little alarming when you see that dollar amount, but, but I think my fear is, is right now we know one major boiler piece. Really, we could be in trouble on that piece, you know? If we, I mean, we've been very fortunate, but now that that long range capital improvement fund is down to a half a million dollars, you know, then that would, doesn't cover replacing a boiler. So I think we just want to be prepared. So we've done our due diligence to make sure that we're ready to go, you know, that way in case there's, like you said, maybe they'll say, hey, you can do this and here would be some expense you could put towards that and, and take care of that. But I think getting that information of how best to move forward instead of waiting and then saying, well, we knew something, actually one day it was going to go out and now it has. And now where do we find dollars? I think that's the big question, you know, are our fund balance policies 10%? We're still north of that. But that too, you know, it's going to be about one point five. Then you add the five hundred thousand there, that depletes things there. So I think we just want to be proactive to, to make sure that we're again putting dollars towards student, students and student achievement and things like that. And I think this is our best way to do that. It's, like you say, it's a lot of money, but I think that's unfortunately the going rate for that type of assessment. I don't think it's.
And again, that's, I, I, I asked about that and that's, you know, that was, she said, you know, there's a lot of places I know when we did, so let's go back eight years or whatever, UNESCO did this assessment for us. And they, as long as we did a project with them, they didn't charge us for the assessment. Well, if we did do a project with them, then it was so much per square foot of what they assessed. So, you know, there was a number and it wasn't, I don't know that it was quite this much, but they had a number. It was eight cents a square, you know, I don't remember what the actual number was, but their number, but it was considerably low with the idea, and this is, you know, that, hey, you're going to do a project, you know, we really want you to do a project with us, which, you know, we, we had projects to do. So that's what we did on those. So, you know, again, yes, it's a, it's a cost. I know we, we talked about, you know, going down that road and they, they said, you know, that's something that they probably could offer, but they don't necessarily want. We didn't necessarily want to get an assessment that was geared toward getting a project from us, if that makes sense. You know, if we tell you we're looking at replacing our heating system, well, then you're going to look at that heating system and you're going to figure out, how can I get the most dollars out of that heating system? I guess, you know, I'm not saying everybody does that, but I think we can all agree that happens. So the idea was we want you to just give us a clean assessment of our buildings without the, the idea that we're going to give you money to do a project with us as well. So, and, and we may, I don't, I don't know what that looks like. The other, the other option was, or that, that we did talk about or I asked about was, you know, we looked at, you know, if you look at Herman, just replaced all their boiler systems for, I don't know, I think eight million dollars or something like that was in the paper, six million, whatever it was. But, you know, they can give us that good, better, best, you know, scenario, you know, obviously, may, maybe we don't need a whole boiler system. Maybe there's a, a different way to do, you know, that we, we haven't looked at before. And so they did say that that's something that they could help with as well as not necessarily, do we have to go replace the boiler system that's been in there for seventy-five years? We could, maybe there's a different option that we haven't looked at. So, you know, that maybe, like you said, maybe there's something we're not thinking of that could be way better for us. So then the other pieces are, our sizing is really changing a little bit. You know, we're, we're kind of going through that little bit of a, you know, we talked about one point of just readjusting how things are allocated to where, you know, maybe we fit better if we, if we change where, you know, those lines are or whatever, you know, maybe that's something that will help and we can make improvements that we, we didn't think of. So anyway, I guess that's what we're looking at is, this is the proposal to start that assessment process. I think they thought probably late this month, early next month, they could get that done for us. And so again, if we were to look at, you know, I don't know that we're going to do this or not, but if we were going to look at putting something on a November ballot as far as a repairs bonds type of an idea, we'd have to have that ready to go by August for, I think it's August twelfth, you know, whatever that, sometime early. It's early August, it has to be approved so that we can get the review and comment and all those things done.
Well, I think the review would even have to happen probably back in June.
Yeah.
So our timeline is getting somewhat tight on that.
Right. So there again, does that happen? I don't know if, I don't know if we get to that point yet or not. I don't know if we're going to make that. But, you know, obviously that's our next general election time where we don't have to do a special election for something. So the least cost to the district, I suppose, to do that. So that's, I guess, that's the information I can tell you.
Well, you know, Maya, we spent a considerable amount of time on that day and going through the schools. I know you did more than I, so. And we, they have us this, they have a proposal for us this fast. I think we need to move, move it. I'll make a motion that we accept it.
I would just add a few more comments to that too.
Quick comments.
No, that's, I mean, we keep the motion on the table, but I, I would say too, the last eight years I've been on the board and probably five before that, we went through four votes with the public and I think there's been a lot of, you know, misinformation and a lot of unrest and a lot of lack of trust and, you know, so how do we build that back? And I agree completely with what Nathan said around, we got to be really fiscally responsible. We always have to be, right? Because we're stewards of everyone in these communities' dollars to help our students get the maximum value out of their experience here. But I would, the question I would have is, you know, what do we do if we don't do this? Because I think this is information we need. And I think we need an independent voice to set the base again. And we are going to have potentially some concerns with some major concerns to address. And if you have a roadmap to that, I think it could save us, you know, probably two to three times this amount down the road, being a little more proactive. And, you know, the communities have kind of said they don't want one building twice. We voted on new buildings for one. Once we voted on a rigorous remodel and then one time we voted on remodel and rebuild. All of them failed, you know, miserably. So we got to find a new path, I think, and this is the start in my mind to get us rolling down that new path. What does sustainable look like? What is the next five to 10 years? And we've seen some of our counterparts, you know, Herman passed something like that. They did some stuff in Chicago. Brandon Evans built a little bit more robust situation. So we see it happening and we need to get engaged. So I would support, or I could second the motion, I guess, if we'd like to do this. Okay. Motion to second. Any other comments? Kayla?
Kayla, yeah.
Then I would, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. All right. Get back to my sheet here. Five point five, approve the hire of Roger Luther Custodian.
Yep. And so that's that part time that we kind of talked about last meeting was the fact that it'll be twenty-five hours per week, so five hours per day. But that does incorporate that one hour reduction in time that we were, instead of hiring back a full time, we have one other custodian picking up two hours. And then Roger would do the other five. That would be here at the secondary school, is my understanding on that. And with some experience, he would be placed at year two on their contract.
Okay. Any other questions, comments?
Move to two.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. That brings us through our new business. We'll go to some discussion items. Item number one, capital outlay.
And so I just kind of wanted to, you know, last year, we, well, what I walked into a little bit was we'd overspent capital outlay by quite a bit. I think there were some pieces there with shipping that weren't included. And, and so we were about ninety thousand dollars over budget when I walked through the door in July. And as you'll tell, I'm fairly conservative on different pieces. I want to make sure that we watch dollars fairly close. And, and so we really watched at this time, which meant some of our folks who had put in for things that did include shipping or different pieces did not get that included. So my proposal would be that we fund, fully fund all those pieces for next year. For those pieces, I know that we have some things at the elementary, some chairs and desks at both elementaries. We have some science tables here that would need to be taken care of. You've recognized that that operating capital includes some of the pieces that were on that summer project list as well. I know that we're also in need of a vehicle, so we need to look at that. But I guess we'll get a proposal there to bring to you and say, do we take it out of operating capital, which we have some reserve in, but we also need to save operating capital for our textbook purchases because it's used for that. So it can be used for curriculum. But maybe there are some dollars that we can use towards that vehicle. Otherwise, we can look, we've got nice reserve as well for that bus, you know, when we sold the buses, there's about five hundred thousand dollars there. So I'll just bring some pieces there for you to look at. And then if there's pieces that we already had on a rotation, we'll continue that rotation,[1727.13] pieces there for you to look at. And then if there's pieces that we already had on a rotation, we'll continue that rotation, one of those being some jerseys that we had already ordered or needed to order back in February. So they're already there. Sometimes the bad part is if you fall behind on some of those pieces, then the catch up is very expensive as well. So kind of taking care of those pieces. So there may be a small dollar amount that would be available for staff. But I did have a staff member when I was talking at the elementary leadership team, they said, you know, there's been some years that dollars just weren't, there was no capital outlay. And I said, well, this might be one of those years is we need to make sure that we have dollars available. We'll take care of, like I said, those projects from last year that didn't get fully funded to get those completely taken care of. I think it means that Aaron and I need to sit down to see. Sometimes if you say, hey, we got twenty thousand dollars available, like one person can put in for fifteen, Chad can put in for forty. So things that way. So we'll kind of get that figured out to see. And that would be separate of the technology pieces there because now we now have the capital project levy to take care of those pieces there. But that's kind of what I'm looking at unless you believe there's a, so I'll bring something to the April meeting to say, here's what I'm kind of looking at, either to say we're going to open it up or we're going to say there is no capital outlay. Now, there are a few pieces that I've asked our administrators to look at. Maybe some needs in their buildings to take care of some of those pieces without going out to everybody to say, hey, are there some different pieces within your buildings that maybe we need to address? And I think that could probably use up most of that budget there as well. And we don't know what the reading curriculum, the state tells us they're going to cover. I don't know if they're going to cover all of that. So we need to make sure we have money there. And sometimes there's those surprises that you allocate all the money and then somebody comes in and they say, well, actually, my curriculum license expires this year, so I need curriculum. Oh, how much is that going to cost? Well, it's going to be seventy-five hundred dollars. Oh, and so we didn't have it. So it's kind of trying to get that cycle all figured out so we can stay on top of that piece. So that's what I'm looking at as a proposal for capital outlay. I know Jake brought the vehicle in the last time and we held off on that. We earmarked some dollars there, so we may look at that to move forward.
And I don't need the fork.
No, that's right. Yeah.
Just so we have that understanding.
The red truck might be available, but I think it's been its number of years. So. So, so we'll look at that to see. But there's other options too, as we look at transportation to say, hey, do we look at some of our own special ed vehicles, which we could get special ed reimbursement to take care of that as long as we use it for more than fifty percent special ed. Is that right, Aaron? As long as we do more than fifty percent? So maybe we'll look at a transport vehicle to take care of that. You know, maybe our late buses are a little bit different. I've had a couple of folks say, hey, if the district looks to purchase a bus and they need a driver, call me up. I'm very interested. So, so I think we have some interest there as well. Like I said, we're going to turn everything upside down just to see what we can do there. But so that's what my plan is for capital outlay to bring to you. I want to leave it open for discussion in case there's other pieces that we, now, Nate and I believe, what do you think, Aaron, about capital outlay? Could we use capital outlay dollars to cover that assessment? It's for repair of buildings and stuff. I'd maybe need to look and see, but that could be potentially one area that we could cover and it would be capital outlay. So I could do some checking on that. Potentially. So that would help cover that piece.
I just, I brought it up because I thought we should have a little discussion on where we would pull that money from.
Nope, I think it's a good, but, but that may be one of those areas. Yep, yeah, it's a significant dollar amount. So I'll let me follow up to make sure that that's a, an allowable expense for capital outlay. I believe it is because it does say a repair or betterment of facilities. And to me, that's what that project is looking to do. So we probably could put it under there. So I will bring that to the next, the April seventeenth board meeting on that to see. Is there any?
I, I would like to add that it's also a priority for me to take care of the items like the desks that were planned, all capital outlay for those prior years that we make sure we get it, at all possible, we have done in this next year.
We will be able to do that. Yep. And it'll be able to cover the entire expense because before I think it was just going to be the desks or the chairs. And then I think we need to come up with a better plan of how do we do that? Because I think they're trying to keep their classrooms kind of matching in case they have to do that. I don't think we've had a real succinct plan to say, hey, here's when replacement schedule is for this, this and this, so we kind of know when that's coming instead of just putting it in for a lottery per se to see if they get their pieces. Let's just lay it out to say, guess what? This year curriculum, we know that we have to earmark or, or, you know, mark a certain dollar amount for that. We have this much money available and it's going to be fourth grade this year that gets new desks and chairs or it's going to be third grade. Because I think if people know what that plan is, I think that would be the best way to do that. I think, I know some people are a little frustrated. For me, I was shocked when I found out that we were already ninety thousand dollars over budget when I got here to say, wow, what are we going to do to take care of that? So I think it's a matter of trying to get all those pieces sorted out just to make sure that we follow that budget. And I think also instructing people that we need the entire expense, not just here's what the chairs costs. And then they forgot to add the shipping, which added another fifteen hundred dollars on top of that. Well, that's real dollars when it adds up there. So I think more clarity on my part to make sure that people understand that and then maybe having a better system to follow through with that as well. But my plan for next year is everybody who put in and didn't get that, yep, now we'll have the dollars. That'll be our first priority. And then we'll take care of those other pieces after that.
I know one thing that came up when we met, when we did our, when we were talking was, you know, we have some of this fluctuation in class size. And so, you know, they bought, for instance, one classroom bought for fifteen kids. Now next year, they're going to have eighteen or, you know, that sort of thing is how do we get those extra three desks? So everybody's got, you know, because some of them, they get some, you know, pretty fancy. They move around and they can move room to room or whatever, but you know, if three kids.
We're not going to have enough for the fourth grade next year.
Right. So if three kids don't have that same, you know, who gets to be the oddball that doesn't, you know, has to fold their chair up and walk, you know, I don't know, you know, but.
We have camp chairs.
Similar, yeah, maybe they bring their bag chair and they, yeah, anyway, so you know, that, that was one piece that, you know, is a concern is that, you know, yes, this is adequate for, and we got this and we had the same number of kids for five years in a row and all of a sudden we got this big balloon third grade class that comes through and, you know, we don't have enough spots. Now what do we do?
It'll be similar for the first grade itself too, with the combining of the two classes, the two kindergarten classes into one. We only have seventeen. Currently desks and chairs, but we'll be twenty-one. So.
Sure. So there again.
They'll be able to take from the other first grade classroom?
They're not the same.
Just to make sure we can, yeah.
Yep.
Make things.
Yeah, to have them the same.
Anyway, I get it.
You're probably looking at ten to fifteen to kind of level things off there.
So just little things like that, but it's, you know, little things that make a difference to the kids, you know.
Yeah, I don't want to be the one that has to carry my entire desk when everybody else is upstairs with the wheels.
So.
Yep.
Anyway, so those are just things that came up and it was, you know.
We give people rides.
Yeah. If we can get our welding and our, yeah, shop class to come through and build us, it's a win-win. It's a standard.
That's right. Yeah.
I've got a box of tires.
Wet shop.
We got all those roller skate wheels in the basement itself.
There you go. Now we're talking. We're thinking outside the box now.
Chairs and desks now.
I'm not going to go down there and find anybody, but anybody else who wants to.
Okay. Any other capital outlay comments, questions, concerns? Next item would be our facilities discussion. I know we've had a little talk now about obviously approving that step forward.
That might be all that we need.
Yeah, I mean, they're, they're, like I said, they're, they thought they could get pretty timely on getting after that assessment. So we'll probably put them in touch with you, Chad, you know.
Does that cover our grounds too, or just our building?
It's actually just the two elementary buildings. So with the process, you know, so when we asked about priorities, obviously our heating and cooling is a, is a big piece at those two buildings. The security was a big piece. There was a couple of other, you know, electrical, we, you know, we have buildings that were built when you didn't have to charge seventy-five iPads in the classroom, you know, so there's outlets that are needed, you know, here and there. So we've got six power strips connected to power, you know.
That's illegal. We did not.
Yeah. I think that it's the same power, right? So. So anyway, those were some things that came up in the process. Well, this building's in pretty good shape. Obviously, we just did the heating. We just did the roof, the parking lots. You know, I know we have some other facilities that definitely need some assessment, but again, we, we kind of have a pretty good idea of what those thing, what those needs are. We don't necessarily need them to assess that for us. We know we need to fix the retaining wall and we need to, you know, fencing and all that sort of stuff. But I guess for simplicity and, and getting this ball rolling, that was kind of where we wanted to direct this initial push. Now, if the idea would be is if we were going to do some projects, you know, there might be some projects here as well that we would just need to do, you know, without having to have an assessment to say, we need to do this project. We know there's some stuff that needs to get done. So that's kind of why they're not going to assess this building, if that makes sense.
And only bring that, that comment up just so we don't forget about that piece.
No.
That it still is a, a need and
Right.
fixes that we know that are out there.
Right.
Hopefully those are still in.
And so that's kind of the, you know, as we, you know, it's, it's not the same, but at the same time, it's the same. You know, we don't know what that answer is for our.
I mean, if you just win the lottery.
If I'd win the lottery, you know what? Here's what I want you to know. I did buy a ticket in Florida because they always win in Florida. So I thought, you know, that was my problem. So I'm, I, I got one from Florida. So if it goes out in Florida and I'm not here tomorrow, you know what? So, anyway.
I was going to cross off all those things that say the funding team. Just say Maya.
Just, yeah. Yeah.
I think it is about these priorities, right? You know, and that, that's what gets so hard with where a budget is and kind of the expense. So, you know, the inflationary environment we all live in, right? We all feel it. This insurance piece, I think, could elevate our priority list, right?
I would agree.
If we're not able to secure some insurance on some pieces, I mean, it's a pretty more of a red flag, right? That we got to get moving and we need to get the community involved when we do get these.
Absolutely.
So we got to, it's a timeline gap too, you know. But you're right, there's a lot of outdoor facilities that we'd like to bump up.
And they're down the road.
Yeah, no, I know, right.
Items of this building are more visible too.
Yeah.
The other buildings.
The public sees this more.
We need, we need some down underneath kind of.
Yeah.
Scope boat.
Well, the basement, she was talking about.
I always tell Sherry when I go down there, just in case she needs to send out the National Guard if I don't come back.
That's right. All right. Well, that brings us to early retirement incentive.
I think I did a lot of talking on that the first time, but I guess just wanted to make sure that that was something the board was comfortable with. To put that out there, looking at those same parameters, years of service, that would be required to teach in, in public education as well as age to match up, to make that a viable option for folks. I think with all of the MOUs I saw, you could either look for the early retirement or they could take a leave of absence leading them to retirement. So I'll evaluate that just a little bit, but I'll bring a proposal for the meeting to evaluate there to an MOU proposal at that April seventeenth meeting. But again, I think just making sure that we've turned over everything because there might be some folks that weren't interested. I think there was one that in particular who said, I'm not necessarily interested in part time, but do you have a buyout option? I might be interested in that. Didn't think too much about it. And I thought, you know, we probably should take into all those pieces into consideration just to to see a little bit and, and see what we could do there. Hopefully it'd be a win-win for the, for the staff member in the district as well.
Great. Any other questions, comments? Then I would look for a motion for item number seven. And a second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye, aye. Meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, Maya.